Good evening. I would like to call the September 11th, 2017 meeting to order. We have some very special guests this evening, the Military Order of the Purple Hearts, to help us with our Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Gentlemen?
Detail. And a half step. Forward. There. 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 Detail. Prepare post colors. Ready? One step back. Present. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise and follow up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready? Two. Right shoulder. Left face. And a half step. Forward. There. There. Detail. Right face. Order. Ladies and gentlemen, you can now be seated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's a very big honor for us to have you here, and we'll be have talking about you guys a little more in just a little bit. A couple quick orders of business. First off, roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter is absent tonight. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mrs. Mittelstetter?
I'll make the motion. So move.
And second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to excuse Mrs. Mittelstetter, seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on. Formal approval of city-county regular meeting minutes of August 28, 2017. Does any member on city council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements and special guests. We have some very special guests this evening, and we also have a proclamation. The proclamation is for a Purple Heart City. I would like to thank Mr. Nick Edwards, Councilman, to help coordinate this, and I think it's very fitting for the city of Bel Brook to become a Purple Heart City on September 11th, 2017. So with that, I'm going to read a proclamation. "A Purple Heart City, September 11th, 2017. Whereas the city of Bel Brook in the state of Ohio has always supported its military veteran and population, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been killed or wounded in action in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the Military Order of the Purple Heart has created exclusively for the combat wounded veteran by congressional action to foster the environment of goodwill among combat wounded veterans, members and their families, promote patriotism among the citizens and community, support legislation initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the Bel Brook metropolitan area has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients, and whereas Bel Brook appreciates the sacrifice of our Purple Heart recipients by made and defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their coverage or courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, I, Robert L. Baird, Mayor of the city of Bel Brook, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the city of Bel Brook as a Purple Heart City and encourage the citizens of the city of Bel Brook to show their appreciation for the sacrifice the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage and to show them an honor and support they have earned." So, thank you all very much. Thank you for your service. Thank all the men and women in our service and our first responders, and it's very humbling to have you gentlemen out here to the city of Bel Brook this evening.
Mr. Mayor, if you would join me here at the podium, please. It is my honor to proclaim and to present you with this plaque, which reads, "The Military Order of the Purple Heart: Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to the city of Bel Brook, Ohio, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans becoming the Purple Heart City. Presented by the Patriot Members, the Department of Ohio, Military Order of the Purple Heart, United States of America."
Once again, thank you very much. Anyone on city council like to say a few words?
Yeah, I would, Mayor. I'd like to thank Mike Moscato for helping me get this coordinated with the Order of the Purple Heart. It was a lot of fun and a great honor for the city to bestow this, and thank you very much. I have an actual Purple Heart that unfortunately Mike earned, and I'll pass it along if you'd like to take a look at it. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Anyone else on council?
I'd like to echo that, too. As a veteran myself, I know how important it is to serve your country and to serve it with distinction. And although the Purple Heart, it comes at a point where one may be wounded in the service of their country, it's a very important medal that you have on your chest, along with that National Defense Medal that presently you have, too. So, thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, too, for your organization to make people aware of the service and sacrifice that many of you have done, and it enables the people to kind of understand the sacrifice, and especially in the city of Bel Brook, as stated in the proclamation, that this city is a lot of veterans and a lot of support. So, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank all you gentlemen one other time. Obviously, Bel Brook and Sher Creek Township, we're a very big military city. We have numerous residents who work at the base, who are actually in the military, and it means so much not to us but our freedom in this country and in the world. So, thank you all very much for coming out here. Greatly appreciated, and it was a great presentation for our Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
I got to look at the Purple Heart first. And that is all we have for mayor's announcements this evening and special guests. We do have a public hearing of ordinances this evening. Ordinance number 2017-7. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2017-7, an ordinance approving a solid waste and recyclable material collection and disposal contract with Rumpke of Ohio, Inc., where the city of Bel Brook participated in the 2017 Southwest Ohio Regional Refuge Consortium invitation to bid for the collection, transportation, and delivery for disposal or processing of residential solid waste and recyclable materials. And whereas the city's current contract with Rumpke, Ohio, Inc. expires on December 31st, 2017, and whereas competitive bids for a five-year contract were opened on June 29th, 2017, and Rumpke of Ohio, Inc. was the lowest and best bidder, and whereas the monthly price per residential unit for unlimited solid waste collection service will be $10.13, and the monthly price per residential unit for weekly recycling collection service will be $2.89 for a period of five years. Now therefore, the city of Bel Brook hereby ordains Section 1, that the bid of Rumpke, Ohio, Inc. is hereby accepted. Section 2, that the city manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Rumpke of Ohio, Inc. effective January 1st, 2018, according to the specifications set forth by the Southwest Ohio Regional Refuge Consortium, and take such other actions as required. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, as you stated, this is a five-year contract with Rumpke. The city participated in a joint bid with three other cities, the cities of Miami'sburg, the city of Brookville, and the city of West Carrollton. We did only receive one bid, but the bid was very competitive from Rumpke. This is about a 6% increase, but it is locked in for a five-year period. So, in the first year, the combination of what we pay Rumpke and then the fee that is paid to the Green County Solid Waste District totals to be $13.85 per customer per month. Right now, we are charging $13 to the customers. We will not have to raise that in the short term because we do have a bit of a fund balance there that can carry us for a couple of years before we'll have to raise those rates. So, the rates to the residents will not be impacted, but this will lock us into a five-year contract with Rumpke. Rumpke has had the contract for the last five years, and we've had very good service with them. They've been very responsive to any issues that we've had over that time. So, with that, if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Counsel, this is a public hearing. Starts with us. Nick, anyone have any questions?
I don't, Mayor.
I'll just make a comment. I think it's a good deal.
You don't think it's a good deal, Mark?
I think it's a very good price. If you look at other cities, it's not only competitive, but probably one of the lowest prices out there. So, it's a very good deal for our citizens, and the service has been pretty good. And it also is nice not to have another transition from one company to another and try to collect all the recyclables and trashcans, and so I also think it's a good deal. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to get up, ask any questions, or give any input, you would have five minutes. You would need to give your name and address. Going once. Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed.
Mark, did any city not have the five-year plan?
No.
I mean, I looked at the price, and I don't know why you wouldn't take the five-year deal.
Yeah, because in the other one, unless you were betting that prices were going to go down, which I would be shocked in.
Environmental cost.
Ironically, there was- Transition, all that stuff, I mean, makes it so much easier to lock in for five years.
There were communities in the Cincinnati area that were sort of on a parallel path, but their bid was after ours. Their recycling bid came in significantly higher than what ours did. So, even though their proximity to Rumpke is much better than ours, they are going to pay more, and most of those communities still elected the five-year option there, too.
And I think, you know, originally, we had Kugler at one time. That was a while ago, but he also lived in the city, our township.
And then we had Allied and Republic.
And then Allied and Republic after he sold the company.
And Waste Management and Republic declined to bid because they couldn't, the reason that they gave was because they couldn't guarantee that all the communities were going to go with the bid. But it still, I think, benefited us because Rumpke did not necessarily know that, so that they sharpened their pencils a little bit.
Perfect. So, may I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-7?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-7.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt ordinance number 2017-7, an ordinance approving a solid waste and recyclable material collection and disposal contract with Rumpke of Ohio, Incorporated, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on. That is all we have for public hearings this evening. We do have one introduction of ordinance, ordinance number 2017-8. Mr. McGill?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2017-8, the city of Bel Brook is an ordinance amending Chapter 1450 of the Property Maintenance Code of the Bel Brook Municipal Code. When I read through this, it pleases counsel, I'll go through the changes that are made to it. The others have already been agreed to in the past.
Yeah, only the changes are highlighted there. Everything else is in the existing code.
Okay. Again, the city of Bel Brook, ordinance 2017-8, an ordinance amending Chapter 1450 of the Property Maintenance Code of the Bel Brook Municipal Code. When I read through this, it pleases counsel, I'll go through the changes that are made to it. The others have already been agreed to in the past.
Yeah, only the changes are highlighted there. Everything else is in the existing code.
Okay. Again, the city of Bel Brook, ordinance 2017-8, an ordinance amending Chapter 1450 of the Property Maintenance Code of the Bel Brook Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Bel Brook has enacted Chapter 1450 of the Bel Brook Municipal Code, which is entitled "Property Maintenance Code," and whereas the purpose of Chapter 1450 is to protect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Bel Brook, and whereas the city desires to amend Chapter 1450 of the Bel Brook Municipal Code to allow for the assessment of civil penalties for violations of the Property Maintenance Code, now therefore, the city of Bel Brook hereby ordains in Section 1, the following amendments to the Chapter 1450 of the Property Maintenance Code of the Bel Brook Municipal Code will be approved with additions shown by italics and underline and deletions shown by strike-through and brackets. In Section 1450.11, notice and orders, if you go down to Section C, Item 4, include a correction order allowing for reasonable time for the repairs and improvements requiring to bring the dwelling unit or structure into compliance with the provisions of the code. We'll strike there at the end there, the word "and." And in Section 5, changes to include a statement that civil and criminal penalties may be assessed if the repairs and improvements required are not completed by the stated date. The next changes that occur in the section go to Section 1450.99, violations, legal and equitable remedies. The change would be Item F of that group. In addition to any other remedy or penalty provided by the Maintenance Code or the revised, Ohio Revised Code, an owner who fails to comply with the notice of violation or order served in accordance with this code may incur a civil penalty. Item G, the code official shall provide notice to the owner of a civil penalty in accordance with Section 1450.1.11 Notice and Orders. In H, the violation of the Property Maintenance Code that is the first offense shall be $25 per day, per offense, or $250 per offense total. In Item I, any violation of the Property Maintenance Code that is a second offense shall be a $50 a day, per offense, or $500 per offense total. In Item J, any violation of the Property Maintenance Code that is a third offense shall be $75 per day, per offense, or $750 per offense total. We then moved down to Section 2, which identifies that the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period of time provided by law. One thing I check on, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager, the Section 1450.01.11 in Item G there, if that's a typographical?
It is. It's 1450.11. There's an extra one in there. So, yeah, I've noted that. So, this ordinance is to be introduced this evening for a public hearing to be held at the September 25th council meeting, but in a summary, what this does is allow us another enforcement tool for property maintenance violations. Right now, if there is a property maintenance violation that somebody has, the ultimate recourse for us is criminal prosecution. I think everyone would agree that criminal prosecution, although it in some cases is appropriate, is not always the best remedy for us. What this allows us to do is enforce civil penalties. So, if somebody has a violation, let's say they leave their trashcans out at the curb all week long repeatedly, we find that as violation. We can now fine them as a civil penalty. If they do not pay that, ultimately, we have the ability to place a lien on their property to get payment for that. We can't assess it as part of the property taxes, but we can put a lien on, so if that property changes hands, we can get payment for that. So, it's just another tool for us to use to get enforcement. We've not had the best of luck going through the criminal prosecution because the courts have a lot of, I'll say, more pressing matters before them, and sometimes trashcans up the street or gutters that are hanging aren't the most important thing that they have to deal with. So, this just gives us another tool to remedy those. In the relative near future, you will see a similar thing for the zoning code. This is for property code violations. We'll have a similar one for zoning violations through the zoning code. The penalties that are established here, I think we tried to make them at $25 per day for the first offense, maximum $250. We're not trying to make money off this. We're trying to get compliance with the Property Maintenance Code, so.
Mark, before we fine them, though, we notify them, right?
Yes.
They have plenty of time to remedy the situation before any of these fines would apply.
Absolutely. So, there's an informal process where we contact them, tell them what we found, ask them to take care of it, and then if that does not take place, then we'll issue a formal letter, in most cases, multiple letters, before we would ever issue fines. So, yes, we seek voluntary compliance long before we get to this process.
Mark, are these fines mandatory or are they discretionary?
They're discretionary.
Okay.
Yes. It's just, we can still prosecute criminally if we choose to, so it's going to depend on the severity of the offense and the willingness of the property owner to work with us, not work with, things like that. So, there is a bit of discretion in here that, before we get to this point, that we would actually assess these.
Who levies it, who charges it, the Property Review Commission, or does it come to council?
Neither one. The staff has the ability to levy a civil penalty. They have the right to appeal it to the Property Review Commission.
Okay.
If they deem that, the property owner can appeal it to the Property Review Commission. So, they would have the ultimate authority to change that. But that's another thing. We're trying to allow some of this to happen without everything having to go to the Property Review Commission, because some of it doesn't rise to that level. We just need to get somebody's attention to comply with the code.
I just have a question on the transfer of property with violations to a new owner. Is that something that's done through the administration of the city? Does the city administrator says you have to have a notice of right statement if somebody wants to buy a property with code violations? It's not a change, but-
It's not a change, yeah.
But since they're going to be enforcing it?
Yes. That would be something that we would handle here locally to provide that statement if there's an ownership change. Yes.
Would a buyer have a recourse on that? Is there, I mean?
The buyer, it's a civil penalty.
How would you ensure that that happened before a transfer of title?
Be the title work.
The title company, I would assume.
The title work, which when they insure it, we find it.
Assuming that we actually went through the complete lien process, then the title company would be responsible for, yes.
But if, let's say it was in process and there was a date it had to be done, it got sold before that, there'd be no way, no?
No, there wouldn't. We would not be able to collect it, but our hope would then be the new property owner would take care of the issue, and that would satisfy us more than the $25 or $50 would.
Right, okay.
What does it cost to file a lien? Any idea?
No, I don't know the-
Do we incur legal fees on that?
We probably do. Our municipal attorney can handle that at a relatively minimal cost, so I don't know. Probably initially, the first one may cost us a little bit more as they develop the paperwork, but after that, it's probably just plugging in the names and addresses and amounts and filing it with the court.
And I think, I do like the aspect, it's not a criminal charge. It's a civil charge. And, you know, we don't do it very often either way, and the idea is that this would even give us a little more teeth and we would hopefully be able to get the problems resolved because we don't want to fine anyone unless it's completely necessary. But, you know, I think we've all gotten complaints from someone who we keep trying. A lot of times, it's going to be, how would this work for the bank? Bank-owned house?
Well, in fact, for them, it would work better because we cannot criminally, it's very difficult to criminally prosecute on a foreclosed property.
Yeah.
Or anyone who's out of state. We've had that issue. This would allow us something that the courts won't prosecute because if you issue warrants to somebody out of state, then are you going to pay?
Yeah.
Bring them back and all those things, and we're not going to do that. So, this would allow us to put a penalty on there that ultimately the bank or whoever has that title, when they go to transfer it, they're going to have to pay this before it transfers.
Can we recover our lien costs in our filing or not?
I will have to check with the attorney on that. I don't know if that's possible or if it's just only the fines that we're assessing there.
I think we'd have to probably look at, if it's truly an issue, then I think what would have to happen is the fines would have to increase, and then, of course, we could always later amend it.
The fines go right to the city and stay in the city, right?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, if somebody has paid that, they would have to pay us off to release that lien.
Yeah. Unlike speeding tickets that we essentially pay to give speeding tickets to Green County.
Yes.
Most people do not understand, we don't profit anything from speeding tickets. Anyone, anything else on council? If not, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2017-8?
So moves the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to introduce ordinance number 2017-8, an ordinance amending Chapter 1450, Property Maintenance Code of the Bel Brook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more resolution this evening, and that will be it for legislation, Resolution 2017-BB.
Yes, Mayor. Resolution 2017-BB, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas this council, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1, 2018, and whereas the Budget Commission of Green County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 mil tax limitation. Now therefore, the city of Bel Brook hereby resolves. Section 1, that the amounts and rates, as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification, be and the same or hereby accepted. Section 2, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said city, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within without the 10 mil limitation as attached here, too. Section 3, that the clerk of this council be and she is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county. And finally, Section 4, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. This is something required by the auditor to assess the tax rates, and on the attachment, he indicates that the county auditor's estimate of tax rates to be levied inside the 10 mil limitation is $3 and outside the 10 mil limitation is 16.5. This is a recurring item we do every year. Mark, anything else to add to it, or?
No. The only thing would be, depending on the outcome of our levy in November, if it passes, this will be amended, but this is the levies that are in place right now.
Okay. Any questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-BB?
Mayor, I'd like to move for the adoption, Resolution 2017-BB.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt Resolution 2017-BB, a resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city manager, you're first.
Yes, a couple items this evening. First, the fire department is holding their annual open house on Tuesday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. That is always a very well-attended event up at the fire station on West Franklin Street. So, everyone mark their calendar for Tuesday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Also, that week is our annual fire hydrant flushing. We go through throughout the water system and flush the fire hydrants to clean out any sediment, things of that nature. That happens throughout that week, so just everyone be aware. Maybe watch, don't do your laundry during the day, things of that nature. If you have any questions, we have information on our website that tells you what to do, but that's the week of October 9th. At our next, prior to our next meeting, we have our joint meeting with the township, the schools, and the park district. It's going to be here. It's at 5:45. That meeting is open to the public, but I have heard back from each of the entities that have represented- If you have any questions, we have information on our website that tells you what to do, but that's the week of October 9th. At our next, prior to our next meeting, we have our joint meeting with the township, the schools, and the park district. It's going to be here. It's at 5:45. That meeting is open to the public, but I have heard back from each of the entities, they'll have representatives here. We try to do that at least once or twice a year, just to communicate what's going on with the different public entities here within the Belbrook-Sherwood Creek community. So, that's prior to our next meeting. And then finally, our upcoming levy. I know I gave you a lot of information the last time on that. I did give you a draft of a postcard, informational postcard that'll be sent out. If you have any changes, that's going to go out. That'll be finalized during the next couple of weeks. If you have any changes or suggestions, please let me know on that. It'll go out in early October. Early voting starts on October 11th, so we'll try to get it in there right around that time. The only issues on the municipal ballot will be this levy, council, and the mayor that are all running unopposed, and then there are, I believe, two statewide issues. I'm not sure what the first one is. The second one is the one on prescription drugs that I'm sure we've all seen the advertising for that. So, those will be the items on the ballot with our levy. And so, as part of that, I would like to have a couple of informational meetings set up to allow residents, businesses to come in. I put some tentative dates out there to council. One was Tuesday, October 3rd, in the evening at 6:00. The other one was Wednesday, October 11th, at 3:00 in the afternoon. So, if anyone has any preferences as to those dates or wants to change those, let me know, but that's, I thought we could have those, at least offer them to everyone to let them know that they're available if they want to learn more about the levy. I would say that Don Buechek has done a great job on our website. If anyone has any questions, he's put all that information on the website. So, if anyone wants to know what this levy is for, or why we need it, what the purpose is, check out our website, and if you don't get your answer there, give us a call, and we'd be happy to answer any of your questions. That is all I have this evening.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for our city manager this evening?
Yeah, Mark, I hate to bring this up because it's bound to doom us as far as weather, but what's our salt situation? Do we have to order, or?
We have a little more salt than we can house here right now. So, our salt barn is at capacity, and then we have a, it's a couple hundred tons that are sitting down by the river, by the Ohio River, being stored for us because we needed so little last year. So, they are in storage for us. We will have to take delivery by the end of the year, otherwise we'll incur additional storage costs. They stored it through December for a relatively minimal amount, but after that, they're going to charge us a per-month fee to continue to store it. So, we will take delivery of the remainder by the end of the year, one way or the other. So, at this point, we don't anticipate needing much salt because we have about seven or eight hundred tons in the salt shed, and we have at least two hundred available to us that we're going to purchase, so...
And what did we use all last year?
Probably two-hundred-and-fifty tons.
Two-hundred-and-fifty tons, yeah.
So, now that I've brought it up, and we're doomed for a harsh winter, at least it'll be my reason that we don't have to pay additional storage fees because we'll have room for that.
Right, as long as it hits before the end of the year, we'll be good, so...
Or we figure out something else to do it, so... Any other questions for our city manager, Mr. Schweller?
Mark, has staff had any questions on the levy from anybody? Has anybody phoned in or gone through the website to ask questions or anything?
Not to my knowledge. No one has given me a call. I've not received any emails at this point. So, that's why we want to make sure people are aware that this levy is on there, and we'll provide the information that we can, and that's what that postcard mailer is intended to do, to make sure people are aware and what the needs are. But at this point, we have not, it's probably a little early in the election season, maybe, but it'll be here, it's less than sixty days away now, so it'll be here before we know it.
Anything else, Mark? Anything else for city manager? Seeing nothing, committee report service?
No formal report tonight.
Safety?
None tonight, Mayor.
Finance and audit?
May I be remiss if I didn't ask our city manager where we stand with regards to the Ohio Audit that was supposed to be completed by August 31st?
I just got an email late this afternoon saying that they want to schedule the post audit. They're not done yet, but they want to schedule the post audit meeting, so I'll be reaching out to council here and with some potential dates there, but we're almost there. I think I said that the last time.
Good, we look forward to it.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
Okay. No community affairs this evening. Any old business, new business? With that, we'll start open discussion, but I'm going to start, I'm going to change it up. I'm going to start with open discussion. I believe we have a gentleman who would like to come up, and I'd also like to give the proclamation, a copy to you guys. Have you come up here, or if you'd like to go over there?
Absolutely. Actually, whatever. Test.
Got him, Lou?
Test. It is truly an honor for us to be here today, and we want to take this opportunity to say thank you, the City of Belbrook, for becoming a Purple Heart city. It is a great honor for us to do that and to be here with you tonight. With that being said, I'd like to, if I may approach, I'd like to present each of you with one of our Purple Heart Challenge Coins.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
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 Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As the mayor, councilman.
Thank you very much, and once again, I'd like to thank you gentlemen for coming out in the military order of the Purple Heart. It's really been an honor to be up here and watch your presentation this evening. So, thank you all very much again, and it's good you had a short meeting this evening, so... And thank you for sticking it out. We appreciate it very... So, we're still in open discussion, so you're more than welcome to come up.
No, I'm just...
No one can hear you unless we do this.
Okay.
So, just come up and, sorry.
It's shortened. You can use those challenge coins to challenge somebody to bond you.
I would like to...
We forgot about Mr. Mark, our city manager. I'd like to thank him for all his help, too, along with Mr. Edwards and all of the council members also. I'd love to mention, Mark, because emails you've answered right away, but thanks for all your support.
And thank you for helping organize it, along with Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, I'll keep it out here originally for open discussion. Anyone else have anything for open discussion?
Mark, sort of relating to that, are we going to put something on the sign?
Well, we've got, we have to figure that out.
Yeah, we have not really discussed that, but yeah, we'll have to do that.
With Mr. Edwards and...
I'll work with him.
Okay, how we can, how we can...
On the cul-de-sac, big...
Yep, wheel, that'd be great. So, we'll get a lion's club on that. So, it's still open discussion. Nick, thanks again.
Sure. We've had some discussion as to how we want to talk about the designation.
Yeah, the road sign, we can do an alternate road sign on the main street.